Thank you all for being here, and I know that there are some that are still walking in, but in lieu of time, and we want to be respectful of your time, I wanted to just give you a little bit of background. Many of you in this room have been part of this last year's ongoing evolution of our future master plan. And ideally, we're working towards a 10-year master plan, but in its divine wisdom, we can probably say for sure at least the next five years, we'll have a plan. It is going to be planned out for 10 years, especially because we don't have with certainty how much money we're going to be able to use every year to fulfill our plans and certainly our obligations as far as our master plan is concerned and in reference to our facilities. It's no secret to anyone that many of our facilities are historical. We're living that right now with the Arechiga Building and with the pending funding on the Veterans Center itself. And while I have to commend Congressman Coelho's work for supporting that Veterans Center and some additional projects that he's trying to work through, it's been difficult. So trying to work with the current requirements of the new administration, and we're doing the best that we can to make sure that we keep that moving forward. Today, well, then fast forward, we had an RFP, an architectural firm was selected. O'Connell and Robertson from San Antonio was selected as our master planners. No stranger to Laredo, they've done work in Laredo before, but this is the first time they do work for us here at Laredo College. Diana Bravo, when I first saw her name on the proposal, I thought, hmm, because we all know Diana Bravo, or at least some of us do, but different Diana Bravo, as you can see. But certainly has been a wonderful addition to our planning process. And I think Diana understands the culture. She and Danny Cornejo both, who Danny's on his way, have been an incredible asset to us through this process. Some of you may remember Danny Cornejo and his name. He was an athlete at Tami U years ago. Katie, I think actually while you were in school, he was there, but anyway. And currently, we have a tecolote named Danny Cornejo, so, but not the same person. So anyway, their input and their ideas, and certainly all of the people that that some of you in this room, but all the other folks from our campus who participated in the different committee meetings throughout the year to try to make sure that we get this right. Remember, this is a living and breathing document, and we are in our almost final stages of this. And so what we want from all of you is your questions, your ideas, your input, and certainly some affirmation that we're on the right track. We're going to have another presentation in the morning tomorrow at the South Campus. And then at the November Board Meeting, they will do a presentation to our board and to the community at large in a public setting. And so, and then hopefully after that, we can start to move forward with our master plan. So I'd like to introduce to you all the lead on this project, Diana Bravo, and Danny Cornejo, who's sitting in the back of the room. And they have been pretty much the ones leading our path down this road. And so without further ado, Diana?
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Ramirez, for your kind words and for allowing us the opportunity to be part of this exciting process for you all. I've been asked to stay in the podium because of the microphone. That's a little challenging for me. I'm used to walking on stage, so I'll make sure I make this interesting for everyone. So before I get going, I do appreciate your introduction. Maybe a little bit more about O'Connell Robertson. Again, as Dr. Ramirez mentioned, my name is Diana Bravo. I'm the Education Practice Leader for our San Antonio office. This year is a very special year for us as a firm. We're celebrating 75 years in business, 50 years serving the education market. So it's really a great milestone for us, and we're excited to be here today. So this has been a process that we've been doing for a while now. This is just an image to remind everyone that we started this process in convocation of not this year, but the previous year, on 2024, when we got selected to do this project. And that particular moment, we said just a plain question out there to the group. What is your highest hope for this process? What is your highest hope for this master plan and for the vision for your college? And these are some of the words that were input by the people that went in attendance, and they were critical in shaping the vision for this whole process. I'm going to walk everyone a little bit through the timeline and what being, oh, thank you, appreciate it. The timeline for this whole process. We started this process with six steps particularly. So we have a visioning process, data collection, an assessment process, prioritization, planning, and execution. And I'm going to go a little bit more in depth later in the presentation. I just wanted to show everyone kind of where we're at. Like Dr. Ramirez mentioned, we're wrapping up this process. We're still doing some visioning efforts in support of future campaigns, but the majority of the big buckets are already in place, I would say. So with that, I'll start with the first step, which was visioning. And visioning really becomes critical because it's our goal-setting exercise. This is really where we sit down, and again, we repeat that question. What is your highest hope? How do we align this process with your vision? And with that, we create what we call guiding principles. And guiding principles really become our measure for success. So through this whole process, we've been going back to these guiding principles. And if you notice, there's different types of guiding principles, some that were just minimum expectations in the process, and some that would really make an impact in the process. So again, this was a reminder, it was in all our workshops, just right there to remind everyone what the goals were set at the beginning of the process. The next step was really data collection. And this is a critical step because this is where we go back and really assess. And this particular step focuses on what we like to say, like it focuses on your people and your program because it's going to focus on just trying to understand some of the demographics, enrollment projections, your growth, your labor market, right, that we're serving through your students, future enrollment, utilization of your facility. So this is really where we learn a lot about that. So in this process, and I'm not going to go through all the details, it's pretty detailed, but in general, we talked about the growth, it's steady, but it's not increasingly high. You see a big dip on the chart, that's COVID. To no surprise to everyone, it affected a lot. But since then, there has been a steady growth trying to get back to where growth was before. This is another type of assessment that was then. And this assessment focuses on what we call utilization and fill. These are two different things. Utilization is how many rooms in a building are utilized efficiently. And then fill is when they're used, how filled are they? So we learned that utilization throughout both campuses was low, but the fill was above 75%, which is really where you want to see that, which means there was a great job in the scheduling aspect to make sure rooms were used efficiently. And then this was also critical for us. We wanted to understand the labor market and really understand the community that we're serving, so we prepare students with programs that are going to serve them well. So when they finish the program, they go out to a labor market, and they're essentially able to find a job. So that's obviously critical as we're trying to understand what we're working with and how we plan. But there's the counterpart to data collection, and that is the assessment part. So just like data collection assess people and program, the assessment focuses on the building, on your structures, on your infrastructure, building systems, really trying to understand whether the facilities are well-suited to support your instruction. So in this process, it was just hard to try to assess everything, right? So we were very strategic, and there was an assessment done for both campuses sideways, for sure, to understand traffic flow, drainage issues, just concerns that were brought up to us through our process. And then there were four buildings specifically that were identified as some of the ones that are utilized the most by students. And that, we needed to better understand the needs to support the master plan. I do want to mention that this process, even though we're architects, it was not done just by us. We had a group of different consultants that supported us. So we had engineers, interior designers. We also had a specialty group called Facilities Programming. They did all the data collection. So it was not just an individual effort, it was a collective team effort. So like I said, these are very detailed reports that were developed, looking at different aspects of those buildings as well as your site. There were also some concerns with the Wi-Fi and technology in some of the buildings, so that was also assessed. So all those reports were developed as part of this process to inform our master plan. So at this point, is when really halfway through the process, all we've done is trying to learn what the vision is, trying to learn what the condition of the facilities are, trying to learn your data and just your enrollment and everything, so we can then get into the master planning process. So on the prioritization, this is where it's a critical path for us because we understand the needs, and this is where we start creating projects, going through budgets, going through timelines, prioritize whether that's really something that it's going to serve the campus well. Obviously, you can't do everything, right? This is a 10-year vision, so we needed to make sure we kept it realistic. Everyone laughed at some point where we had an analogy of a Thanksgiving dinner. You don't go in and just eat everything on the table. You have to be, well, sometimes, but you have to be strategic, right? So there was the whole point of how do we strategize? Because we know we can't achieve everything, but we want to make sure that what we can achieve is going to serve everyone. So with this, we then created goal settings. Like what are those goals that we want to focus these potential projects on? So we talked about career pathways, whether that is new programs or growing existing programs. Technology and Wi-Fi was a big component that was discussed. Safety and security, access control, those were discussed. We talked about some of the critical areas of either campus that we needed to address. And then in general, to no surprise, just with the age of the facilities, just the firm maintenance components that we needed to improve on. And then student empowerment. Ultimately, everything that we were doing, everything that we were planning needed to be student-centric and in support of the students. Secondary focus, we're trying to do some improvements in your traffic and circulation as well as outdoor community spaces. So with that, we developed potential projects. And I'll be going first through this slide that talks about projects that were identified in both campuses, and then I'm going to go per campus. So first, we talked about security and technology, and that means access control and network infrastructure to support some of these programs. We all know that technology is great, but there always is the newest thing. And these very specialized programs tend to require better technology every time. So how do we plan for growth and at the same time do improvements in your technology to keep those programs working effectively? And then central plan improvements, similarly, as the programs grow, you need to be able to support your buildings. And then landscape improvements, we talked about just pedestrian mall improvements, drop-off and pickup area improvements from a safety standpoint, to be able to become gathering spaces as well. We know that the weather here in Laredo, it's really hot, right? And we wanted, so for us, it's a security strategy. It's not just to beautify a space or create a gathering space. And then just landscape improvements in support of that. And then a big component that we talked about as well was wayfinding, side branding, make sure there was equity between both campuses. We talked about what we call edge identification. When you step into a Laredo College campus, you know you're in a Laredo College campus. How can we make that really visual as you go into either of the campuses? Specifically for Fourth Macintosh, we talked about the Cigarroa Science Complex. I know you mentioned it earlier, just modernization of that facility. The Kason Student Center, similarly, modernization as well. The Lerma Peña Building, there was a discussion about the records-keeping area and make sure we provide a fire-rated room to be able to keep all of that, all of those records. The Maravillo Gym, similarly to Kason, just the needs for modernization. Memorial Hall, also modernization. And then P1 Building. This is where we started diving into those programmatic improvements. There was a whole discussion of this is a building that is high-volume. Can it support an industrial lab? So we are then thinking of supporting workforce development. So that's something that came out as part of that. For the Police Building, we identified the need for a standby generator. And then for Yuri Library, we talked about how highly utilized is, but then it's maybe not suitable. We call it education suitability. If the space is suitable for the instruction that is going to be provided. We all know there's different learning modalities. We want to make sure that the space is set up in a way that everyone can go in and utilize it effectively. And then lastly, in Fourth Macintosh, it was identified some of the issues that you have as you're coming in to the campus over the bridge, and how can we improve in that intersection particularly? For South Campus, we talked about Billy Hall and just the need for modernization, just like some of the buildings in this campus, even though they're newer, they're at that point in their life cycle that they do need modernization. We talked about the need for multipurpose gathering. It could be, there's different strategies that could be identified for that in different locations. Student Services Building, this came as a comment from bringing equity of services between both campuses, making sure that's available to everyone. And then Saffroni Library Modernization, as well as some other components that were identified as part of our assessment scope. There was also a whole discussion of with the labor market analysis, the need to grow some of the transportation program, global logistics, whether it's forklift training, eighteen-wheeler training, and being able to have an improved facility that could support that. And at some point, we had it identified in separate campuses. But then we started thinking, well, economies of scale, right? If you're going to build a facility that can serve multiple parts or different programs, that's probably a better investment than trying to do one in one campus and one in another one. So we thought of how do we combine those in support of that? There was identified some issues with one of the parking lots as far as access, so just modifications to that. And then similarly to this campus, we talked about pedestrian improvements, but also an event quad, because we identified that that has an area that a lot of the larger events happen. And we wanted to make sure there was an opportunity to provide a space for that as well as solve some of the drainage challenges that are on that particular site. So again, this is just giving you a flavor of some of the things that we discussed, and not necessarily this is the final look. We always talked about this is painting the picture. That doesn't mean this is what it's going to look like. It's just trying to show some of the things that could potentially go into the spaces. And then also, a lot of the focus on trying to grow some of the things were based on just workforce development, which we know that's where the labor market is heading. So I talked a little bit earlier that a big part of this step is trying to put this in achievable buckets or an achievable roadmap. So part of that was, how do we then create different faces for this process? So we essentially identified three faces. Like Dr. Ramirez said, without having a clear picture of in 10 years, what's the financial capacity? This is to the best of what we could plan. Also knowing that if something's not completed at one phase, it just essentially continues to go down the line. So Phase One really focuses on maintenance, security, and site improvement. So these are the hot items. These are front-burner items we need to address, so we identified those as Phase One. Phase Two, what we called the front-maintenance tax notes. We talk about the opportunities to do maybe an alternative funding source to support these and what projects then would fall into the front-maintenance to be able to put them in this particular phase. When you are improving a facility or modernizing, I talked about it a lot, like we're looking at this facility as modernization, that's when those would fall into this particular bucket. If you're looking at programmatic changes, really those then become what our next phase is, which is capital improvement projects. So this just gives you an idea of what those phases were, short-term, midterm, long-term. None of these days are set. I know there's still a study on, again, how the financially, financial capacity will be at. This is just the best we could plan for. So when we look at the projects, when we're looking at Phase One, these are the same projects that were listed earlier. We're looking at around 38 million to support some of those efforts. And again, these are the highest priorities right now, and the reason why they were listed as Phase One. Not necessarily everything is highest priority. This is where we need to strategize as we go through this process. Phase Two, these are the deferred maintenance. So these are primarily modernization, improvements to existing buildings in support of instruction. So this is roughly 76 million for that. And then lastly, when we go into Phase Three and we talk about capital improvement projects, these are primarily either new construction, new buildings, or large additions. And for this one, we're looking at 145 million roughly. So these are the three phases that were identified for that 10-year plan. So the next step then becomes the planning, right? We know the needs, we know how we can take the different bite sizes, but how do we plan for it? When is the right time to do it? This is where I always say, like we did different studies of, just to show an example, in the top, you see those circles overlap. Does it make sense for these buildings to happen at the same time? Because you can take them out of commission, focus in that area, improve it, and then switch to a different area. So this is really where we started, like, planning through all that. So this is just painting a picture. This is your current campus at Fourth Macintosh, this campus. And as you can see, there's a lot of the light blue. This is truly just modernization. These are all the facilities that need to be modernized or improved. And there's different aspects that go into that, whether it's education suitability, building systems, accessibility, anything that you can think of to better serve our students. The one facility that we, you see the darker blue at the bottom, that's the P1 Building, and we identified if that was going to be an industrial lab. There was a component where they needed to have outdoor instructional space, so that truly would be an exterior improvement to support that. And these are some of the early sketches that our landscape architect was working on just to try to bring a concept to life of what that pedestrian mall would look like, providing opportunities for flow for the students within the campuses. And now going to South Campus, this is the campus as it exists now. When we move into our proposed, you start seeing, again, you see the light blue components, which are the modernization, and then you see the darker blue, which then are the proposed new buildings. And you also see the addition of that driving pad in support of the transportation program and some of those training facilities. Similarly to this campus, this is just giving you our early concepts for what that pedestrian pathway would be for the students, as well as that event quad, giving opportunities for maybe an amphitheater to support some of the event, as well as food trunk access, just different strategies to support the different events. And this is where we're at today. Here, coming to report to all of you back and just share some of what this process that we've been doing this whole year. Like Dr. Ramirez said, we are wrapping up some of the visual efforts in support of just trying to showcase some of the projects that we're looking at. But I want to open it for any questions? Oh, I thought she had a question. I guess you're turning the mic on, it's fine. Okay. I guess I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Ramirez.
Are you sure no one has a question? Well, some of these projects that you saw today that they highlighted, especially in that first phase of security and lighting. If you recall, recently, we got approval to do a Johnson Controls process for lighting and some of the security issues in our water plant, our physical plant. And the Board of Trustees did allow for a recent, some of the surplus funding that we had out of last year's budget to be used this year to support those efforts. So everything, not everything, but some of the things that you saw in Phase One, we're already getting ready to award at the next budget meeting through the Johnson Controls Project, the physical plant upgrades for our water plant, certainly some of the lighting issues that we're having on campus, trying to start transferring all these things to LEDs. All of that is part of the Johnson Controls Project as well. It was identified in this particular project as a need, and so some of those are already moving forward. And so over the course of this last year, we also started already the renovation of P1 because we are moving some of the industrial programs into P1 already. Dr. Hernandez, Mr. Vela, there are some people that have been really involved in what are we doing with that in our construction management program, and some of those other facilities that are being upgraded already. And so some of what's in this plan in that first early phase, we're already working on. But as you can see, the need financially is going to be great. We're also waiting to hear back from some pending asks for facilities. Just this morning, I sent some information to the Congressman's Office for some of our historical buildings. And they're looking to see if maybe through the historical process of the legislature, because it was an old fort, and funding out of either the historical commissions or out of the military budget, that they could identify some funding to help support the renovation of some of our older facilities that were part of the original fort. So I submitted some of that, Gabe was on that email as well. And it's work that we've already started to do on the historical portion of our campus. The new map, the new design of the new brochure, the upgrade of the history of the college. All of that is already being worked on. So some of these things that are in our new master plan, which we haven't even finalized, we've already started to work on because we needed to. It is going to take a concerted effort to get through. It is going to take a concerted effort to get through all of these upgrades that need to happen. There are some programs that for us are staples. Certainly, our health science programs are part of the staples that we have. Our Cigarras Science Building is part of a staple that we're gonna need to upgrade that facility, because it is part of the foundation of the work that we do here. And then all of our workforce programs, those also need to be continuously upgraded to meet the needs and demands of the, our business community as they hire our students, we need to be providing the most up-to-date teaching. We've been working in this building, we've been doing some upgrades in this building as well. And so little by little, we've been able to start to move forward facilities-wise. But there's still much to be done. And, and I know that somewhere in the not-so-distant future, there's gonna have to be a bond. And, and at some point, we're gonna have, the board will have to make that decision, when is the right time? When do we start to really start putting things together and putting numbers together to really formalize consideration for that? But ideally, we're working on reducing current debt and bringing that down quite a bit, so that when that does happen, we can show good stewardship of the money that has been entrusted to this institution by our community over the course of the year, years. And so with that, if there are no more questions, we will close today's hearing. I know that Mr. Cornejo and Ms. Bravo are gonna be here for a while, so if you wanna come up and ask them questions privately, you can. I do wanna recognize that we have some of our board members in the room, the President, Mr. Esteban Rangel, I don't know if he's still in the room, he was here when we got started. Ms. Indileando, our Parliamentarian of the Board, Mr. Mercurio Martinez, Judge Martinez is here, who was part of the last bond, was President of the Board of Trustees when the college went out for the last bond, and Ms. Erica Bravides Garcia. So thank you all for your support and thank you for being here, it means a lot to us. Yes, sir? Do you wanna grab the mic, pass it for him, please?
Have you considered that the...
Hold on, hold on.
Thank you. I know in reference to the future, and I don't know if you are aware, but have you considered the possibility that right now, the Trump administration is pushing very strongly for a wall, all right, to be built for, you know, the Rio Grande River, all right? Have that possibility been considered? And another area also, there is a little site here that is known as El Paso del Indio, which is recognized as a very historical site. Have that, have you considered the possibility of a wall being built or not? If we can, I personally, I would rather not, to be honest about it. But sometimes, there's other points of view that will emphasize otherwise, and I hope that will not be the case with us. But have that been...
So we have not yet been approached by the Border Patrol for another wall, because we already have one. We have the wall that exists behind us here, that's already there. So we have not yet been approached, but I, that would be a decision of the Board of Trustees on whether that would be the direction we want this, that would have nothing to do with our master plan, because we wouldn't have to fund that. What I do think it would do is that certainly for some of our science faculty who do have use access to the river to do their own research, and some of the students doing their own research, it would eliminate that opportunity for them. But they would not do it, this is considered private property as of now. And so we would have to give grant permission for anybody to do anything on our property. And so, no, that has not yet come up. The second part of your question was, what was it?
El Paso del Indio.
Yeah, and so that actually, currently, the Border Patrol does actually keep it clean, and so that, so that people can actually use it. They also work on maintaining the Star Fort for us. And so they've made it kind of their pet project to keep that clean and accessible, and so that's ongoing, but not part of the master plan.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Well, with that, I do wanna thank Ms. Bravo and Mr. Cornejo for being here. We will do another presentation tomorrow morning at the South Campus. If anyone thinks of any questions or has any comments or suggestions, please, if you don't want to ask in public, ask them privately, or send them to me, or send them to Mr. Vela, we'll be happy to bring them forward to the firm to make sure that they take it under consideration, all right? Thank you all for being here today, we really appreciate your input and all of the people that participated in this process over the course of the entire year. Thank you.